Cheryl, how is this from?
Hi. Is that you? Could you do that?
No, she said the same thing.
Oh.
He's not.
Who is it?
Well, we've got Jonathan Stumpf out there.
No, he's not.
Do you see a veteran in that audience?
Chair. Chair.
Yeah. It's that time?
Chairman.
Okay.
Chairman.
You know what? Yeah.
You know, Ms. LaHera's not here yet, so try to...
I'm aware.
Okay.
Denise, are you up to doing the pledge?
Yes.
Okay. Cheryl, just let Calvin know. It's a political issue.
Where the hell's my cup? Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Just a way to get it all started. All right. Welcome to today's meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. Today is May 28th. It is 1:01 PM. And today we have Pastor Michael Hart with Seven Rivers Church in LeCanto, Florida, to lead the invocation. And then afterwards, our very own Madam Attorney, Air Force Veteran, will lead us in the pledge. If you are willing and able to stand and join us, please silence your devices. Thank you. Welcome. All right, let us pray. God, you say in your word that we are to offer supplications and prayers and intercessions and thanksgivings for all people, and especially those who are in high positions, that all may live a peaceful and quiet and godly life. And we know from you, God comes all authority and wisdom. And this is the world that you live in. And so you're capable of giving us all that we need to live in life and with godliness. And we would pray, Lord, that you'd help us align our lives under your authority. We know in this county there is brokenness, there's poverty, there are drugs, there is broken families. And you know the hearts of all more than we do, every hair on the head. And therefore, that you can restore, you can bring peace, you can heal. We would pray, Lord, that you'd use these commissioners to help make decisions, to have the needed wisdom to do that very thing, to bring peace and healing to every ounce of brokenness in this county. And so, Lord, we desire that everyone in this county learn to love and to serve one another the way you created us to, ultimately, that we would all live under your authority. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Aye.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 28th day of May, 2024. And attendance are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioner Ruthie Schleba, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise Saed Diamond-Litt.
Thank you.
Your buck.
Mr. Howard?
Just two items. Additional information, E5 resolution is not included, deleted paragraph B in the recommended action. Also, additional information, E6 documents updated to reflect Tampa General Hospital Crystal River corrected to Tampa General Hospital Citrus LLC. And that's all, please.
And I would also ask the board for some flexibility on navigating the first 45 minutes or so of the meeting because we have, Michelle LaHera cannot be here until 1:30. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda, what the changes made and the leeway that you need.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right. Looking, would you like to take the consent agenda in its entirety?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right. Looking, would you like to take the consent agenda in its entirety?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right. So, I am going to go ahead and open to the public for roughly 25 minutes. Tempers are running rather high right now. Lot of passion out there. I would ask that everyone be measured in what they say, and let's focus on the positive rather than any sort of name-calling and being inappropriate in a public venue. I would really appreciate that. And please fill out a green card either before or after you speak. We need one of those. You have three minutes. Please watch the clock. It'll give you a yellow one-minute warning, so I don't have to cut you off. If you have a letter on file, you get five minutes, but you need to let Commissioner Finnegan know that you need five minutes. And all comments are to be addressed to the chair. Who's first up? Is that you, Mr. Schwartz?
Stephen Schwartz, Beverly Hills. Commissioners, with the relief hearing coming up, and once again, I will be out of town for a wedding celebration. I would hope that Attorney Dale Scott will make every effort in the attempt to uphold your decision to honor the master plan. As a Pine Ridge resident, when I spoke to the attorney, I gave him the history of Pine Ridge and my opinion, which won't make either side happy. When I worked for the UPS, United States Postal Service, as a mediator for the American Postal Workers Union, I found it extremely important to have both parties meet in the middle. My suggestion to the attorney for the golf course was one-acre lots, no walled in, separate community, no lighting, as the owners can have motion sensors for security lights. He billed to the Pine Ridge ADC and deed restrictions, and when a home becomes occupied, they are annexed into Pine Ridge Estates. I would hope Mr. Dix would drop his lawsuit and allow both parties to move forward with peace and harmony. On the next door, someone posted there are illegals living in Floral City and C busloads at the McDonald's on 44. I don't know. I would like to know if there's some truth to it. I saw in the Chronicle that you want to hire a firm to study on growth to Citrus County. I would think a good idea or place to start would be the property appraiser and the sheriff. If my memory is correct, he mentioned growth numbers when he was looking for more deputies. If all the developments are approved and are built and growth stalls or stops, you will have an excess number of empty homes, driving down the values of existing homes and an increase of crime. This will directly affect your calculations for income to the county and will affect your budget. If it's not too late, I do recommend, again, putting it on the ballot, a one-cent sales tax to be used solely for resurfacing. It would be a trump card. Then market it through multiple ways, letting the public know the tax can only be used for road resurfacing, their social media while you're on your campaign trail, and the homeowners associations and other residents that want their roads paved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Steve Meckler from the failing state of Maryland. Although what happened the past 10 days and came to light, I've never seen it happen in Maryland. So today, I'm here speaking out on the love of the LaHera family. And I'm wondering, you know, it's mental torture, actually, what they've been going through for months that nobody knew about. And I would like to know if perhaps you can have staff, which I feel is fully competent, along with the rest of you, who's not like somebody else, if we can adopt Andy LaHera, if he gets kicked from the curb for doing his job. A lot of people don't understand, they're non-union. He was put in that situation. He didn't fall off the roof of his house. And for him to stand up and say, hey, wait a minute, we don't have enough safeguards in place, he's looking for another job. So it's feed the family or put your life on the line, which they do every day anyhow. So if we can propose that, maybe have staff do a little deep dive, I'm sure that's one tax that 85% of this county would stand behind. You know, I would definitely support that myself, no matter what it takes to make him whole and his family to have peace of mind. So I'll leave it at that because the venom may come out. And Holly, I'll respect your request. So, thank yous.
Thank you, Mr. Meckler. For the record, that's the very first call I made was to administration to see if we could transfer his employment. We cannot, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Schleba?
Mrs. LaHera's here, so if you wanted to do...
I saw that. Welcome. We, I think all of us have told people 1:30, so I'm kind of hesitant to move ahead, but I'll serve, I will cede to the pleasure of Mrs. LaHera. Would you like to wait till 1:30? Okay.
You're the chairman, we'll do as you say.
We also, just so, this is a little out of order and a little non-status, but we do not have open to the public for the proclamation, so if you do wish to speak on the matter of the proclamation, this is your time. If there's enough people that need to speak, then I will pause, open to the public, we will do the 1:30 proclamations, and then we will reopen, open to the public. You don't get a twofer, though, only one time at the first open to the public. So... What would the topic be about whoever was to speak, just so we're clear? Yeah, I understand. We're not supposed to answer questions from the audience, but this is general open to the public, so you can stand up there and sing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer out of calendar if you want. It is, but you get three minutes and you could speak about anything you want. The only rule is that you be cordial. Practice cordiality. Thank you. Yes?
I can go?
Uh huh.
Okay. Terry Webernellis, Inverness Village, four. It's nearly impossible for us to get answers to our questions, but I'm going to try again. Number one, who pulled the utilization permit for the roads to be allowed to be put into IV-4? Number two, why did the county allow the roads to be put in knowing drainage was needed? See your lawsuit that you keep saying you won, and also see the SWITHMUD violation letter. Number three, why did the county make emergency repairs to the original portion of the subdivision but refuse to make emergency repairs now? Number four, why will we not be given a workshop? We've asked for this for years, over and over again. Number five, why did the county try to enforce a code change for IV-4 only concerning water containment systems without complete information? What would the estimate of the cost have been? Could it affect our septic drain fields? Did it need to be approved by SWITHMUD or the DEP? Just some additional comments I'd like to make. Commissioner Finnegan, I believe you can feel our pain now concerning how difficult it is to get a straight answer. Commissioner Knord, who's not here, do you really want to wait until someone is injured or dies because of the road conditions within IV-4? Commissioner Bays, thank you for the follow-up with SWITHMUD concerning the county making emergency repairs. Love your idea to increase code violation fines, and I hope it happens in my lifetime. Commissioner Schleba, I couldn't agree with you more. We need a workshop. As I've said in the past, I realize all commissioners rely heavily on staff, but I can guarantee you, there are homeowners in IV-4 that have more knowledge. Why not help us find a solution? Commissioner Davis, you're our commissioner, and it's your responsibility to us not to give up. Please give us a workshop. Mr. Howard, if your wife chooses to go on social media and spread inaccurate information about IV-4 as she has done... Madam Chairman, point of order.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me?
Her comments will be saved, and I promise you, your wife will be confronted by the homeowners of IV-4.
Mrs. Weber? Mrs. Weber? I'm going to ask the deputies to remove you.
Oh, good.
Point of order. I asked for cordiality.
I can't speak the truth? I'm speaking the truth.
It's...
The buyer beware law changed in 1985. This is not a good look for our county administrator. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker?
I was really hoping to not have to be a lion tamer today. Please state your name for the record and carry on. Hi, I'm Michelle Brace from Inverness. I'm here to advocate for Deputy Andy LaHera, a man whose devotion to our community has been unwavering. Deputy LaHera, like many in uniform, has sacrificed immensely, risking life and safety without knowing if a day's work might forever change his life. Tragically, his dedication resulted in a severe injury, marking his body with the permanent scars of his commitment to our collective security. It falls to us, the beneficiaries of his bravery, to ensure that he is not abandoned in his hour of need. I'm here today to ask you to consider a resolution to extend the protections of Florida Statute 112.19 to ensure that Deputy Andy LaHera, who has suffered a catastrophic injury in the line of duty, receives the necessary health insurance benefits for himself, his spouse, and his dependent children. What we are seeking today transcends mere policy. It represents a critical lifeline. Extending benefits under Florida Statute 112.19 is our collective endorsement of the sacred social contract to stand beside those who protect and serve with valor. At stake today is not only Deputy LaHera's future, but the stability of his wife and their children. Health coverage is not about luxury. It's a bedrock necessity for them, the foundation for rebuilding their altered lives. Backing this resolution mirrors our collective gratitude and underscores the respect and commitment we owe those in the line of duty. It recognizes the immense challenges faced by law enforcement officers and their loved ones, offering a measure of security in tumultuous times. By endorsing it, you make it possible for Deputy LaHera and his family to access needed health care without the fear of financial ruin, offering his spouse a respite from the anxiety that comes with uncertainty. I call upon you, distinguished Commissioners, to consider the profound ripple effect your affirmative action would have on the LaHera family. View it as an affirmation that bravery and community service are not only honored, but come with tangible and dutiful support. Let this action today be a show of unity with Deputy LaHera and reinforce our commitment to every officer who faces danger in the public service. Your decision can validate our collective respect and unwavering support for our guardians in their most trying times. Let us demonstrate that we are indeed a community that stands together. When faced with darkness, we illuminate the values of our community with actions of support and solidarity. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Carleen Sumper, Inverness Village, four. County staff is hanging their hats on the proposed engineering study presented by IV-4 residents as of November 2023, stating that swales and ditch blocks similar to what was used in Phase 1 is not sufficient. If this is the case, why is staff currently issuing permits for single-family dwellings located in the proposed drainage retention area? The county is a policing entity. Just as Commissioners can vote to alter the entire land development code for IV-4 only, you should also be able to stop the permits being issued in the drainage retention area. And in close, please take care of your deputy.
Next speaker?
Hi, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Bill Dolly, and I'm one of those Marines that I know people in low places, and, you know, I can count to 10, so I think I'm good to go. But I'm here today, I gave you all a bullet point, two slides, if you would look at those, please. I'm not going to talk to it, but I do want to make some general comments. And I know this is a very complex issue concerning Deputy Sheriff LaHera, and I know there's a lot of legal issues, there's insurance issues, there's coverage. But, you know, I'm here today, and this is from all the citizens, mine is the blue, it's on the bottom, right? So, you know, all I'm asking is, are there any solutions, any courses of action or anything you can do at your level? And I know maybe your hands are tied, but, you know, there's always discretionary policy decisions and discretionary funds that perhaps could take care of this, but I know it's complex. But I think the solution is, talking about the FY budget, you know, you all have budget authority, and I know what that means, and you have competent authority with that. So your job is to ensure there's no fraud, waste, and abuse of taxpayers' money. My money, their money, right? That's your job. And your job is to do it to the best of your ability. So having said that, you know, it seems to me you should have metrics at your level here, right? And two I could think of for the CSSO, right? This is all data-driven, right? This isn't, I'm not making this up. One is, you know, you got to get the traffic futilities to zero, right? And go after Fennel, because it affects us and tourism, right? I love the hoods. Okay, that's one. You have a role to play in right-sizeing the CSSO. I know the sheriff gets a budget, you give it to him, that's his discretionary thing, but I would suggest what I call a good-faith budget withhold. You have the authority to withhold 10% of his budget for good faith, right? If you give him metrics or he's not performing, that's his problem or her problem, right? It gives you some influence over his behavior, right? And what they're doing. So his job is to right-size the sheriff's department and move deputies around where you deem we should have more patrol officers or more narcotics, right? And maybe we don't need some more maritime officers on boats or in helicopters, right? That's your job, and that's the way you can influence him. And maybe the last quarter, he gets his money if he's meeting metrics. Just a thought. You know, again, I think, I think the thing with Deputy Officer LaHera, it's been addressed, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. I got a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. One is, we've moved to a new system for outstanding Commissioner items. And I try every week, or every two weeks, to get the backup materials and see what's going on. Well, I went on the website, and it's really nice, it's easy to get to, and I highlighted outstanding Commissioner items, and then I said, fine, print it. Well, let's see, when you print it, you get a sheet like this, a sheet like this, and there's nine of them, nine pages of it. So I had to go to the individual item that I was trying to look up, which was about the roads and the resurfacing. And I could take and I could copy two lines onto a Word program, and then I had to take my time and try and get it to some assimilation so I could actually read the entire report. Now, I don't know what I'm doing wrong, but I'm sure that a couple of the other citizens are probably feeling this very frustration that I have, because this is what we used to be able to see. You bring up the one thing, and you can see the whole thing, as to all the dates and the, you know, the way it was done. Now, we get one or two, and you got to scroll that, and if you're not careful, it actually scrolls to the next item that isn't what you were trying to look up. So I'm really frustrated with that. Then, the second item I had, I wanted to talk about is the fact that the space needs are not being addressed very quickly for the judges. I talked about it last week, or two weeks ago. But it does say that on our money that we're going to be spending for the American Rescue Plan grant, that we are going to be spending, if everything is approved today, $284,000 for a space needs analysis, which is going to take a year.
Andy's journey, but a celebration of the collective strength of our community. It embodies the spirit of hope, determination, and unwavering support that defines Citrus County. On behalf of Andy and our entire family, thank you all from the bottom of our hearts. Together, we have shown that no challenge is insurmountable, and with faith, perseverance, and community support, we can overcome anything.
Whoops, there we go. I'm going to ask Cynthia, Kristi, Austin, Susan, and Gyra to come forward, please. I want to start with staff, and I'm very proud of the county's GIS Division and Team Citrus for being recognized with this Regional Award. This is a testament of a culture of innovation that is happening every day at Citrus County government. So I was honored to actually be there and participate in the ceremony a few weeks back. But I want to thank them for their continued due diligence that they continue to do every day across the county. This is just a sample of all the hard work that the employees which keep the county run in each and every day. And they were a winner of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council's 30th Annual Future of the Regional Award for Community Preparedness and Resiliency. Somebody bring this award up there now, please. Yeah, you may want to just say a few words if you could. I was going to have her, because she does, it's amazing what they did, just to think about, you know, we were up against some very large counties in this region, but for this county to be recognized on this platform is amazing. So just the amazing talent that we have working each and every day.
Thank you very much. While these are the sorts of applications that you really never want to have to use, I'm pleased to know that we have them at the ready when we have any sort of storm event or any other event that might need us to do this sort of data collection. And to be recognized for that is tremendously special for us as a team to know that we've pulled that together. And I'd like to thank the systems management, Gyra, for helping us with setting up the tablet, the rest of our team for testing the applications before we went into the field, and thank you to Steve Howard, our administrator, for even suggesting that these were worthy of an award and to encourage us to do the applications. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I very, very much appreciate the, oh, sorry. Glad we had a celebration afterwards. I was able to not go too verklempt. Yeah, we're going to go back to open to the public again. Let's just keep it on the positive side. Deputy LaHera has had a grievous thing happen to him, his whole family has. And so I have to say, I'm, as someone who's been in this county a long time, I was gone for a while, but we're special. We take care of our own. We're a community, and we're going to pull behind them and make sure that the LaHeras get the support that they need. And I'm very grateful to be living in this community. So thank you. Who else would like to speak at Open to the Public? If you've already spoken at General Open to the Public, you don't get a second go-around, but is there anyone else? Yeah, officially, yes, you can. But now you're under the three-minute rule.
All right, let me get my glasses on first, because that might take me three minutes. They're new. Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am here as the wife of Deputy Andy LaHera. This marks a solemn milestone in our lives, one year since Andy's life was irreversibly changed while serving our community. What started as a regular day ended in a nightmare from which we have yet to wake up. This isn't about recounting the past, it's about advocating for Andy's future. Andy's dedication to the sheriff's office and the citizens of this county has been unwavering. From his start in 2009 to his role as a school resource officer, Andy has always put the safety of others first. Now we ask for the same dedication from the sheriff's office in return. In July 2023, just two months after Andy's accident, I was informed that if Andy could not return to work within six months, he would be separated from the sheriff's office. This news was devastated, devastating. Andy, who has given 15 years of his life to this community and is still fighting for his life, was being fired. We were told that once Andy's sick time and PTO ran out, I would have to call the companies on my own to see if I could continue paying privately. I want to be abundantly clear today that what we are seeking and what we are not. We are not seeking coverage for me or our two boys, Nicholas and Vincent. We fully expect and have planned to be covered independently. We are not seeking his full salary. We know that workman's compensation is providing 66% of his salary until he is of age 75, and that they are an entirely separate entity than the sheriff's office. We are not doing this from a monetary aspect. The community has rallied and taken a measurable care of our family. Andy selected and paid for some of the best policies the office had to offer. Losing these benefits after paying into them for 15 years would be a travesty. We are not seeking for the sheriff's office to pay for Deputy Andy LaHera's medical insurance or life insurance simply to remain on their group rate policy. Our plea today is simple. We are seeking policy change. We want to secure health and life benefits for Andy LaHera through the CCSO group policy that we are fully willing to pay into. Here is what we mean by that. Workman's comp will continue to pay for any and all care related to injuries or complications from this accident. However, workman's comp does not cover any medical needs that arise independent from the accident. We want to secure medical insurance for Andy should a non-related medical emergency arise. This is not a political issue, nor is my perspective highly skewed. We are here to bring our situation to light. This is about ensuring that Andy is not abandoned in his time of greatest need. Imagine for a moment that this was your husband or father. Imagine the pain of seeing someone you love, someone who has dedicated his life to protecting others, now lying in a hospital bed, struggling to do the simplest tasks. Andy has gone from being a protector to someone who needs protection, and it is our duty to ensure that he receives it. My husband is not a business. He is a human being who has dedicated his life to serving others. We are asking for basic human decency and compassion. Andy was hurt in the line of duty, and he should not have to fight for the benefits he rightfully earned. Every day, our family struggles with the reality of Andy's condition. The emotional toll is immense. We ask for your help to see to it that Andy's service and sacrifice are honored with the benefits he deserves. In closing, thank you to those who have stood by us, to our community for your unwavering support, and to everyone who continues to pray for Andy. Andy's fight is not over, and neither is ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaHera. Would anyone like to follow that? Okay, seeing none, going to close Open to the Public. Thank you. Let's, is the room about to clear? Because I don't want to keep going. If the room is about to clear, it'll get loud. Pardon? Oh, I'm so sorry, hang on. Commissioner Finnegan just reminded me. Thank you for the assist. Would the board like to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak before the LaHera family leaves. I am so sorry for everything that you're going through, and probably like many people in this room, we've all been praying for you. There's a lot of information out there, and I don't know that it's all coming from you, and I don't know that it's all true. I've made some notes. I feel like what you just read is typed. Is that typed? Are you able to email it? Like the informa, so I was sloppily trying to make some notes, but if you wouldn't mind emailing that, because I know there's something else, and I'm sure we all got the emails, and they're citing a Florida statute. I don't think that comes from you. And when I look up the Florida statute, it's for the family and its death benefit. So some of the stuff out there wasn't making a lot of sense to me. It's, there's stuff out there, and it's not what you're saying today. So I, I want to talk to the people that have facts, and it seems like you are trying to correct some of the entry.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. And, sorry, I've got to keep, I've got to keep.
I'm asking respectfully if you just wouldn't mind sharing, because there's so much misinformation. That being said, the IV-4, the only question I can answer today about your asking who allowed for the roads to be put in, because very early on, I had asked the same question, and they were never allowed to be put in, and it was a code compliance, and I believe they were fined for that. So typically, there's not supposed to be roads cut in, and the developer that's not a developer was fined. And Janet Barick about the space needs, we don't have to buy a house in Inverness. I told you, I'm ready. We can move out and let the judges figure it out, and we'll figure out where to go in the long run. But I know that the judges are busting at the seams and ready for us to all move. But it's not just us. I think there's a lot of other people involved. I think we're the easiest ones, and we're probably all easy to move along, but they are working on getting the other people where they need to be. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlebaugh?
Thank you. There's a lot going on that was said, IV-4. Steve Schwartz has a lot to say. But I do want to say to the LaHera family, known you for many years, and, you know, if you saw one LaHera, you saw four LaHeras. So seeing just the two of you is emotional for me. It's emotional for my family, and I'm just so thankful that your dedication to your husband and to your dad, I mean, how blessed Andy is to have you. And I believe that the right thing will be done, and, you know, there will be no man left behind, and, you know, we as a community, whatever we can do to help. So bless you and keep you, may the Lord keep you, and I'm just so sorry that you've had the year that you've had.
Commissioner Bays?
Mrs. LaHera, I'm very sorry that you're going through this. As any first responder and 16,000 veterans in this community, when one falls, we all fall. And there should be no mistake about how they're going to be taken care of. I know there's many veterans out there that receive those disabilities when they're injured in the line of duty, and your husband deserves no less than that. So I pray for all of our first responders and their health, and keep protection around them for each and every one. Takes very, makes you very brave to be here. There's lots going on with IV-4. What I would say about it is the water containment idea, it's very complicated. If you'd like to sit down sometime and talk about it, I'd be happy to do that. I don't think this is the point, but I would like to get a workshop. I think they deserve a workshop. We should spend a day talking about it and throw all of the mud on the wall. Janet, to say that we're spending money on a space needs is out of line is probably one of the most ridiculous things I think I've ever heard. As a business person, if you own over 100 buildings, I don't even know what the ages of all the buildings are. They don't have the modern-day efficiencies, air conditioners, roofs, not to mention the fact that you're taking staff and sending them around to mow and maintain and upkeep. The cost of doing business, it's time. This is long overdue. We need to find, we need to have a process in place that tells us how we get the best return on our, on our investment. We can't keep doing the same things. And number one, we don't have the same staff. In 2008, when we had the Great Recession, we lost, by in 2013, we laid off 25% of our staff, and our ad valorem collections just caught up this year from '08. We haven't staffed back, and sometimes it makes more sense from a business perspective to hire outside consultants. They're the experts, as opposed to bringing them on, paying salaries, paying FRS, paying all the other stuff, and they're still not experts. That's the reason we do some of this stuff. So I would be happy to sit down and talk with you about it, but that's the reason we're doing it. But to stand up here and throw mud and say that we're doing something that's wrong, that's simply not true. We're, we are trying to be the best Stewarts of the taxpayers' dollars by doing the right thing. For the first time, I was on this board from 2010 to 2014, there was a lot that was left undone. We're trying to play catch-up. We had the Great Recession, now we have the Great Inflation, and there's not enough money to go around to fix all the past sins. And that's just a fact. So if anybody wants to sit down and talk with me about the issues, I'm happy to do so. We'll have coffee, we'll go wherever you want to go. But it's time to start talking business and not emotion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bays. Again, thank you for being here. And I've already said what I need to say there. As far as the courthouse goes, my understanding, Mr. Howard, is that we are not waiting for the space needs analysis to get that rolling, correct?
It is, and it's a little more difficult, so it's not, I mean, actually, the commissioners are the easy, easy ones, I can move around now, but the public defender's office, had good discussions with them. There was a suggestion during that collaboration meeting that they also need to go, that's 4,000 square feet you got to find. So it's a little more complicated, but absolutely, we are working already behind the scenes to look at alternatives, options, and things like that. So it won't, we, we won't take 12 months for that effort.
Thank you. And as far as IV-4 goes, I listened very carefully to all the questions. Every single question I heard has been asked and answered multiple times. Virtually all of them are in the letter that was sent to Attorney General Ashley Moody in January. The only update to that was the failed ordinance to collect stormwater, which is the only way we could halt permits on the low-lying lots. So I, I left it all on the field. I tried very hard to get everyone to understand that that's what we needed to do, but unfortunately, the residents that did show up from IV-4 were vehemently opposed to it. So the board followed what the, what the neighborhood that showed up wanted. So, and with that, we are done with Open to the Public. Regular business.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Moved to approve E-1A through I. Second.
I think that's a L, JKL.
Oh, excuse me. Second. A L.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E-1?
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. E-1L, I would like some actual discussion on that and some reasoning. Whenever you get a vendor in this county, you've always gone out and gotten more than one bid. We listen to one person tell us what they can do, okay? The charge is $300,000. We're not paying it because it's coming out of that ARPA money, okay? So that's fine. The question is, are there going to be reoccurring yearly fees? Because if I read this right, they're going to maintain it on a yearly basis. It doesn't say that the $300,000 is going to get us every year for the next, say, five years, that we can go back and ask them questions, or that they're going to update it. Okay, so my, you know, my biggest concern is, yeah, it's not going to cost us anything because we're spending money that the government supposedly gave us to spend, but the thing is, what about the reoccurring? It's like a grant, okay? You got the money from the government, it's just like the sheriff put in for a grant, and then there's the reoccurring fees. I want to know what the reoccurring fees are and how much they are. I saw how much the hourly rates were for setting the things up. You know, that printed out real nice, and it told me all the other things that I, you know, was questioning, but I'm still wondering, why are we only looking at one vendor when everything else we usually do is three vendors? If you can explain that, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Seeing none, board discussion? Ms. Barick, we covered that extensively in a prior meeting, and we decided then, by consensus, to do sole source on this one because of the proprietary nature of what they do. Anybody else have anything to say?
Well said.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Motion to approve E-2.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E-2? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. E-3?
Motion to approve E-3.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Bays. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Is there any public comment on E-3? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. We all missed, with the emotion going on today, we all missed the 1:30 time certain. We didn't have people waiting on that. It's all internal?
Yeah, we don't know, but I think we can finish and then go to that.
We could just go.
That's what I, that's what I think, so I think it'll be fine.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
There's a lot going on.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan.
I noticed it too, but I thought it was best to complete.
Well, I missed it, so I'm glad that somebody was tracking it. Commissioner Finnegan, thank you. All right, E-4?
Motion to approve E-4. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E-4? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
I have some.
Okay, Commissioner Bays?
Is that this packet that we received?
No, it's E-14. E-14 is the packet.
Okay, never mind then.
Nothing further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. E-5, A, B?
Is it A and C?
A and B. B's been struck and out and rewritten.
Oh, I see, so it's actually, C is B.
All right, motion to approve E-5, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by, that was Commissioner Bays, yes?
Yes.
Does anyone have any public comment on E-5? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
Chair, just request clarification. Was he rewritten, or was it deleted period?
I thought it was deleted, I thought it would be A and C, but.
My, my thing says A, B, and B. What is, what is the official agenda say? Mine has a B stricken through and a B that's clean.
E-5.
E-5, are we?
The additional information, the blue sheet?
Uh huh.
Just has A and B.
Okay, all right.
Do you have it?
Do you have it, Amy? No, I don't.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did everybody vote?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. E-6?
Motion to approve E-6, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E-6? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E-7.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Motion to approve E-8.
Second, A and B.
A and B, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E-8? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E-9, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E-9? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Motion to approve E-10.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment?
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. Core Civic is doing a terrible job, and we're allowing them to do it. First month, we let them have $31,000. This month, we let them have $30,000. Two months now, $61,000. That's not good. And just remember, 12 months prior to that, they had to pay us every month that they were not in compliance with their contract. Contract that was negotiated by the board, contract that was approved by the board and Core Civic. Something really needs to be done with the Core Civic Association or Incorporated, or whatever you want to call it, because they are not meeting their contract needs with the Board of County Commissioners.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Any board discussion? Commissioner Finnegan?
I'm going to just stand by the, the six months, nobody walked into that jail with a bigger hammer ready to swing than me. And I saw all the things that the new warden had done, all the things he was trying to do, and I wanted that contract monitored, and I didn't want it held up, and I felt like that was a great point to negotiate it. They pay for it, it's our employee. Speaking of, how's that going on? Because I know.
Pretty very close, we're finishing up some background checks. We've had several applicant, I mean, a lot of applicants, so we're very close to doing finalization of background checks on, I think, the individual that we're going to offer the position to, so hopefully we'll make an announcement in the next two weeks. We're very close.
And if we care about what happens in the jail beyond what we see about staffing in here, that is going to be a fantastic position for both parties, to have this person in that jail at varied times. So I'm, I'm happy about that, Mr. Howard, that you're, you're coming to a head on that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Any further comment? Commissioner Schlebaugh?
Just want to say, well said.
I'll make a couple comments.
Commissioner Bays?
I think we're doing our best to monitor this. It's not easy, but you want to talk about increasing your budget? If you were going to terminate their services, that means every person that you hire as a correctional officer, you're going to pay them a deputy salary and FRS benefits. I went to Pasco County, the county just recently took the contract back from their sheriff. They had a 21% increase in their food service, and they had a 55% increase in their healthcare for the inmates, which means we take all that on. That contract pays for the healthcare of the inmates. We don't. That means we take it over, and we're going to pay all deputy salaries and FRS benefits. So you want to talk about a big cost? We better be trying to work this deal out. That's what I got to say about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bays.
Madam Chairman?
Commissioner Schlebaugh?
Well said again. You guys are on fire, very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Bays has got her, business calculators on fire today. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. E-11?
Madam Chairman, I moved to approve E-11.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E-11? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. E-12?
Motion to approve E-12.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on E-12? Is there any board discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Bays?
I would like to at least have my colleagues agree to possibly looking in at taking back the Emergency Management Center and possibly the Animal Control. I just, getting into these budget discussions, I'm a little concerned that we have Board of County Commissioners, once they approve a budget for a sheriff, we have no oversight. We can't allocate those dollars, and if we're going
And if we're going to have this type of relationship, I think we need to have more say so and the state basically ties our hands right now and says we can't do that. You know, maybe there's an opportunity that if we're going to do it, we take it back, but it's an agreement, so we know how the dollars are being spent, we understand that. But to have the state come in and tell us that we're going to fund an amount and then we have no oversight over it, I think that's bad business and I think the states, I think they're overstepping their boundaries and telling local governments how to budget.
Done?
I'm done.
Commissioner Schlebaugh, do you have something?
I mean, I can approve this, but I'm, this is part of my angst with this one and the one before and I, I just, I think it's time that we look into it. I'd say it'll happen, but I think we should explore it.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Howard, we do know that after a natural disaster, ninety percent of the duties after fall on the shoulders of the B O C C. A past board member brought this up and there was some discussion before you were here. I, I think that if we could get a consensus to look at it and it could save the taxpayers some kind of money, I think, I would, I would like staff to look into it. Not saying I would go for it, but it, if it's something, we know Commissioner Bays crunches those numbers, I have looked, I looked at it four years ago, it was Commissioner Carnahan that brought it up. So if, Madam Chairman, if there was consensus to look at it and see if we could save some money, I'm all for it. Thank you.
I would like the Sheriff's Office to have an opportunity to see what parts of the budget are broken out. If we're talking about saving money, we would need to see what's allocated to emergency operations and what's allocated to the animal shelter. I don't, I don't see us doing it better than the Sheriff's Office when they, you know, that's, that's kind of what they do. Obviously Troy Hess is going to say something about that.
Hang on a second, he hasn't been recognized. Sorry, Mr. Hess. Never even crossed my mind to take over animal control. However, because I go to Florida Association of Counties, National Association of Counties, I am always interested in what the best practices is and I do understand what your predecessor, Mr. Oliver, always said is exactly what you said, that most of emergency management is the aftermath, not just law enforcement. And certainly, we have fire and EMS under us. I believe it's a large majority of counties in Florida handle emergency management, is that correct? Am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, I don't know that either.
I didn't prepare for this topic, so I'm going on memory.
But we could research it.
Madam Attorney.
Not to that question, but I, I just want to make sure our record is, is clear, I think that Commissioner Finnegan said animal shelter? And I think that, I think that the rest of you are talking about animal services, I just want to make sure we're.
Animal control.
I misspoke.
Animal control.
I'm thinking correctly and speaking incorrectly.
Well, with my fuzzy brain, I want to make.
Animal services and animal shelter are hand in hand, animal control is the purview of the Sheriff's Department at this time and it never even occurred to me to pull that out, so. In any regard, I'm always open to exploring things, I'm not saying that I would be for it. Mr. Hess? You are recognized.
Well, I'm not here to discuss emergency management, animal control. This Next Gen 911 grant falls under, it doesn't fall under emergency management, just so we're clear on that. This deals with our 911 system and it's not just the Sheriff's Office system, it's the county system, EMS, fire, law enforcement, public schools, we all use this. So all this is, is the Next Gen 911 grant that we're looking to apply for, that was an MOU that was signed earlier by this board, I think back in March, that we would work collectively with the other counties trying to get to that. Right now, we're on a legacy system. We're looking to get on the Next Gen 911, eventually that's what the state of Florida wants to get every county onto. This grant exists through DMS, it's a cost reimbursement grant. It's my understanding that we don't need any additional funds at this time because of the way the contracts through the vendors are done. We confront the money through 911 funds and then we get the reimbursement that way. So I don't project there being any budgetary impact to the county unless something unforeseen happens with the build out of it, but we've been very clear with these vendors that we need to know all those costs upfront. So we're just here looking for permission to apply for the grant.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Madam Chairman.
Madam Chairman. I do understand that, thank you Deputy Hess. But on our packet, it's E twelve, but then the packet that the Sheriff's Office sent, it's E fourteen, so I'm kind of, that part I would like to get cleared up. What, what, when are we really talking about, E twelve or E fourteen? I know they're the same, I think they're the same exact thing, but there's more information on E fourteen.
I don't have an E fourteen, so I think maybe that's a typo.
It's a typo, looks like.
I think it's a typo that says E fourteen, I think it should say E twelve.
Does yours say E fourteen? Okay, okay, so this one, just E twelve?
Yes, I think it's just a typo ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, do you concur, we only have an E twelve, there's no thirteen, fourteen?
Well, there's a thirteen.
There is a thirteen? Well, there's no fourteen then, sorry, thirteen's on the next page, got it. Okay.
Thank you.
There's nothing further?
Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
There's nothing further, may I call the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Now we're on E thirteen.
Did you want to follow up on that consensus idea?
I think you've got consensus pretty much. I said I'm open to exploring it, got two down here.
If it'll save money, I definitely would like Mr. Howard to look into it. For the tax fares.
I work at your pleasure.
Oh. Madam Chairman, E thirteen, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E thirteen? Seeing none, is there any board discussion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Alright, outstanding, you want to jump to H or go to outstanding commission items?
Yeah, anything that, there's no updates today, everything's on, online, obviously we can continue to, to fine tune things, obviously what we're doing with best practices, the Veterans Administration uses this system, NASA's using the system, a lot of other governments, so we can continue to look at that. One of the biggest issues with the commissions, was before when I looked at it, it wasn't being updated, I mean there was stuff on there for 2017, it was like one line, it didn't tell you anything. So part of that is letting us to have more transparency, but we're always open to suggestions and making it better, we're committed to that.
And to piggyback on those comments, I want the public to know that every time, every day Veronica Campshower is making improvements to the system on there, we just had a meeting with Senator Marco Rubio's office last week. We were very proudly trying to pull up some widgets and whatnot and they weren't, it wasn't exactly behaving the way it should and that's because Veronica was in the system, so if it doesn't seem to work right, give it a few hours, go back and if it still doesn't seem to work right, shoot us an email. Veronica@citrusboc.com. Alright.
We'll also send those, any of those comments on to the third party, that can help on assists because they have, maybe there's some things that we can do to continue to make it better.
Okay, and G, that would be you.
H, nothing, I don't have anything on.
Okay, so let's move on to H one.
No, if you're in the theme of calculators and saving monies, this is actually, I think, a cost savings. One thing, when I came and took this position, they didn't tell me about, I was the acting executive director of the Office of Utility Regulation. That's something that I knew about in boxes of materials and things like that, but long story short, we did, we tried to put it at best foot effort forward, working with the legal counsel and others, but I think we're at an opportunity now to actually send this back. And I'm just gonna say a quick statement here, the responsibilities and complexities of the regulation of private water and sewer providers in Citrus County has reached the point that exceeds the capabilities of staff, even with an outside consultant, based on the revenues that you generate. These complexities for both rate and engineering services will increase as these private sewer providers are required to meet the new BMPA standards. The Florida Public Service Commission has a legal, engineering, accountants and rate consultants to meet the vast and varied needs of both these utilities and customers. Consequently, we recommend that these responsibilities be transferred to them. And again, there's no cost to the, to the taxpayers for this, if we ship it back, I think we're spending money now that we shouldn't be spending as a result of my time, county attorney's time, others' time. So we're at the right place, right time to send this back as we continue to grow, that's where it should be. So we're recommending approval after the public hearing, the resolution transferring responsibilities from the Water and Wastewater Board to the Florida Public Service Commission.
Thank you. On the matter of H one, would anyone like to speak for or against H one, opening the public hearing? Going once, going twice, closing the public hearing, board?
Motion to approve H one.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, a second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Alrighty. Trying to pull up because we're gonna do committee reports, I'll have to remember if I had any committees. Okay, we don't have any I, do we have any committee reports? Commissioner Finnegan?
No.
No? Okay, Commissioner Bays?
No.
Commissioner Schlebaugh?
Not this week.
And I also did not have any board meetings, okay.
You might be setting a record here today.
Yeah, right? Whoa. Alright, moving on to Commissioner Schlebaugh.
I have nothing, Chairman.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Nothing.
Commissioner Bays?
Nothing.
I have one thing. Daystar, Ann Marie Breiercheck, I talked to her this morning and she said that she would like to request, and this is for you, Commissioner Schlebaugh, would like to request a covered bus stop at Daystar because they're getting a lot of people coming for showers and then they're having to go sit in the hotter than the surface of the sun Florida summers, so.
We have, I think, fourteen in the works, Mr. Howard, is that about right?
Yeah.
Now it might be down to thirteen.
I think so, and I, I've asked staff to look into this matter as well, so we'll be, we're happily to analyze it further.
When I started this in 2021, Chairman, which who would think that it would take this long to get a bus stop?
Bus stop shelter, we have bus stops, right?
We have our first two now and they do have a little shelter, we did not have that before.
Yeah, but didn't we have bus stops, but we didn't have shelters, right?
Well, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, you can stand in the corner, under the bus stop.
It's the shelter part that's the, the big upgrade.
Yeah, the bench, the bench, yeah. So I, I think that it is in the works, we made sure to cover the county very, you know, but I think Home SASSA might be, it might be the next one coming, there's a lot.
We'll report back and get all that together for you all, but.
I can't remember what.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
It is covered through the county.
Okay.
We'll take care of it.
And that's all I have, Madam Attorney?
I have nothing, thank you.
Alright, then we are moving on to the second open to the public, would anyone like to speak? General open to the public?
Oh good, wouldn't have a record.
Hello. Good afternoon, Amy Penner Hernando. This is more to Commissioner Bays. You have mentioned in the past about an MS to you for the sheriffs, very interested in that and if you can get support of the.
I believe it's coming June 11th, board meeting.
Perfect. Second thing, I would like to get some information on from commissioners. In all the research I have done, according to state law, low off highway vehicles, golf carts, ATVs, are not allowed on the roadways in Citrus County. According to what I found in 2006, Citrus County opted out of letting them ride on roads that are under thirty-five miles per hour. Lately, I'm getting a lot of pushback from deputies saying, no, they are allowed. I would like to get some clarification and get it in writing so I can take it to them, even though I've basically provided them with a copy of the law, to see if something's changed that maybe I'm not aware of. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Schlebaugh?
My understanding, if that, if a vehicle does not have a license plate on it, they are not to be on our roads.
Has to be license plate, license plate, seat belts, headlights, taillights, turn signals, just like a regular car, and insurance, thank you, of course. Magic Commissioner Bays pointing out the need for insurance. Madam Attorney, can you verify that, or confirm, deny, or tell us that we have to look into it?
Well, there are certain areas where you have, where they are allowed. And so I don't know if this speaker is speaking about any of those areas where they have been allowed, but otherwise, the, the law would prevail. It's very hard sometimes to tell the difference between a golf cart that's able to be on the road and one that's not able to be on the road. But there's definitely a statute, I, I don't have it memorized to, to say exactly what it says, but so long as she's not talking about areas where you have allowed it, then the state statute would prevail.
Yeah, and I would assume there would be a, there would be a speed limit if nothing else, a minimum speed. That, or a maximum, a very low speed that they would have to be somewhat able to keep up. In other words, you can't pull out on a fifty-five mile an hour highway in a golf cart.
The statute would control, the traffic laws.
Yeah, the traffic, yeah.
And, and they are called low speed vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
I could look at it, but.
When I retire as a commissioner, I'm gonna be so good at trivia night. Just saying. Alright, so anyone else want to speak at open to the public?
Just to touch on this, gotta look into the fact that construction workers are driving out there with their big tractors without being hauled and they should be on flat beds. And I noticed they go from property to property along Pine Ridge Boulevard and Mustang, from one construction site to the other with their little loaders, you know, so we're digging up dirt, so I would, you know, wonder about looking about that and talking to some of the developers to tell them that their.
You have to speak into the mic.
That their, that their people need to, you know, follow the laws on the roadways, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, for public record, can I get him to state his name?
Come on back up, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I apologize, Stephen Schwartz, Beverly Hills.
Thank you.
Janet Barak, Citrus Springs, I wasn't gonna come up here, but I was here when they did approval for the golf carts. Old Home SASSA, and I'm sure that our attorney will be able to find that, was approved for golf carts. All the people that live in Terra Vista, but the Terra Vista people were told, not across 486, okay? And they made that very clear, the commissioners, when that was brought up, because it has to do with safety. And getting across 486, there is no lane for them to actually be in, they would have to be on the regular roadway. And I'm sure Commissioner Schlebaugh probably remembers that also, but the biggest one is Home SASSA is yes, Citrus Springs is a no. Not anywhere in Citrus Springs, except on the Citrus Springs Golf Course. And that, you know, that, because that's, that, you know, so there are areas, but I'm not sure if there were any other designated a hundred percent that was allowed that, but I do know Old Home SASSA down by, you know, the river and the water and stuff, you're allowed in there with no problem. And it's really slow driving.
Anybody else like to speak at open to the public?
Hi, Madam Chair, Commissioners, let me get this straight.
State your name for the record, in three minutes.
Sorry about that. You want me, do I need to fill a card out?
You already have one on file, it's good, right?
So just for clarification, the way the budget works now for the sheriff, you have no say, you just hand him the money and he can build a swimming pool, he can do anything he wants with that internally in his organization, is that correct?
Go ahead and get through your whole thing and then we'll respond.
So the first question of that is, how do you know there's not waste, fraud and abuse? That's one question. No, I mean, who keeps them in check? And two, the MTSU, does that mean you have control over that if we shift that over the sheriff's budget? If you, if you build this tax.
We'll answer you when we win. We typically answer after everybody's gone, we thought there was only one, so we answered on the fly.
Right, if somebody could explain that to me a little bit more detail, does that mean Commissioners own the budget at that point if you shift to that model? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak at open to the public? Going once, going twice, close open to the public? Commissioner Bays, you want to take that?
Well, right now, like, as I said before, the, I think it was about two years ago, the governor basically gave sheriff's offices full autonomy over their budgets. So we have no, there is nothing. Once you approve the budget, they're free to move the money any way they like. The MSTU, the portions of, it doesn't cover everything, but it covers a great portion of it. So what, you could move into an MSTU? At that point, we would still have to vote on the mileage of that MSTU. But what happens is it becomes very transparent and accountable. So the MST's out there, you know exactly what the monies are being spent on. And then when a sheriff comes up and asks, wants to increase his budget for deputies or vehicles or whatever it is, then you know, and it's your money. I mean, we talk about dollars as if it's the B O C C money, it's not. It's your treasure, not our treasure. Our job is to try to protect it, and by having an MSTU, I believe that's one way to protect your treasure and let the sheriff answer to the public and be accountable for what they're spending those dollars on. We can ask those questions, but we can't enforce it. But I think the citizens can.
Well said, Commissioner Bays. Would anyone else like to speak?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bays, I think I heard you say that the governor made the change. Did you mean to say the governor or the legislature?
I think it was a little bit of both. Just want to make sure we're.
Commissioner Schlebaugh, you have your light on, does that mean you want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, anything further? Then we will move on to Ms. Stanton, take it away.
Upcoming meetings, regular meeting, June eleventh, 2024, at 1:00 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse, room 101-10 North Apopka Avenue, Inverness, Florida. Regular meeting, July ninth, 2024, at 1:00 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse. Regular meeting, July twenty-third, 2024, at 1:00 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse. Upcoming workshops and special meetings. Preliminary budget hearing, Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, 2024, Library Special District at 8:30 a.m., Fire Protection Special District at 8:45 a.m., and B O C C at 9:00 a.m., Citrus County Courthouse, room 100. Tentative budget hearing, Wednesday, September eleventh, 2024, at 5:01 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse, room 100. Final budget, September twenty-fourth, 2024, at 5:01 p.m.,